For Monday, June 23rd, 2025, please stand if you are able and join me in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Would the clerk please call the roll of the members?
Corey Stites.
Here.
Leah Dozeman. Janice Hoppen.
Present.
Rachel Holtein.
Present.
Dan Larson.
Here.
Scott Ohm.
Here.
Jenny Snell.
Here.
Amanda Weaver.
Here.
You have a quorum.
Thank you. Counselors in your packets tonight, we have the meeting minutes for study session notes on May 19th and June 2nd. Are there any changes to those minutes? Seeing none, are there any changes to the agenda tonight? None, alright. We have one proclamation tonight? Can I have Karen O'Donnell and the Parks and Rec teams join me up here? Do I get the fun one like this? We have one proclamation tonight. Our proclamation is for Parks and Recreation Month. Whereas, launched in 1985, this year marks the 40th anniversary of Parks and Recreation Month. And whereas, this year's theme, Build Together, Play Together, reminds us of the contributions of more than 160,000 full-time park and recreation professionals, along with hundreds of thousands of part-time and seasonal workers and volunteers who maintain our counties' close-to-home parks. And whereas, the city of Wheat Ridge owns and manages 373 acres of open spaceland, seven miles of trails, 21 parks, over 7,000 trees, 22 ballfields, 19 playgrounds, two recreation centers, two swimming pools, and three historic properties. And whereas, Parks and Recreation promotes health and wellness, improving the physical and mental health of people who live near parks. And whereas, Parks and Recreation promote time spent in nature while positively impacts mental health by increasing cognitive performance and well-being, and alleviating illness such as depression, attention deficit disorders, and Alzheimer's. And whereas, Parks and Recreation encourages physical activities by providing space for popular sports, hiking trails, swimming pools, and many other activities designed to promote activities lifestyles. Whereas, Parks and Recreation programming and education activities such as out-of-school time programming, youth sports, and environmental education are critical to childhood development. And whereas, Parks and Recreation increase a community's economic prosperity through increased property values, expansion of local tax base, increased tourism, and attraction and retention of businesses and crime reduction. Now, there be it resolved, on behalf of Mayor Starke and the City Council of Wheat Ridge, I hereby proclaim July 2025 as Parks and Recreation Month in the city of Wheat Ridge.
This is my favorite meeting of the year. Thank you, Mayor Protam Stites and council members for this proclamation recognizing Parks and Recreation Month. On behalf of our entire department, I want to express our gratitude for your continued support of the work that we do every day to serve this amazing community. This past year has been busy and exciting for Wheat Ridge Parks and Recreation. We're getting closer to completing the Green at 38th project with a grand opening celebration scheduled for September 6th. We're also wrapping up a solid year of hard work and deep community engagement as we finish, near the finish line for the Parks and Recreation Pathway project. Thanks to strong partnerships and staff persistence, we've seen continued grant success, funding major projects like the Green at 38th, the Tabor Lake Trail, Panorama Tennis Courts, and the replacement of the Hayward Park Trail, just to name a few. We're celebrating 46 years as a Tree City USA designee and 25 years of the Wheat Ridge Recreation Center, which continues to be a hub of wellness and connection. We've expanded innovative programming for all ages, maintained clean and safe parks and facilities, and are currently working hard to keep our beloved outdoor pool open for generations to come. None of this would be possible without the hard work and dedicated staff and volunteers, including members of the Parks and Recreation Commission. I'd like to acknowledge Mark Duty, he's here this evening on behalf of the Parks and Rec Commission, the Cultural Commission, and the Active Adult Advisory Committee, and truly so many more. Tonight, I'm honored to be joined by several members of our team who represent the heart of what we do. First, YY Dennis, if you want to come forward as I call your name. YY is our beloved garden coordinator, and she brings people together through innovative and meaningful programming. YY has played a vital role in growing the Regenerate Wheat Ridge program, building strong community partnerships, and transforming happiness gardens into the magical inclusive space that it is today. Her creativity and care continue to inspire. Next up, Greg Skon. Greg is one of our aquatics coordinators and a true behind-the-scenes hero. In addition to supporting lifeguards and swim instructors, Greg's talents for troubleshooting and repairing mechanical systems has saved us countless dollars in downtime. His calm, capable presence, and ability to mentor young staff are invaluable. Thanks, Greg. Alright, you might not see her here, but Logan DeCico is here, our fabulous marketing specialist. And yes, you may have seen her dressed as Booster the Rooster. Logan brings fresh energy, creativity, and a can-do spirit with everything she touches. She's always ready to jump in, whether it's designing promotional materials, staffing events, or simply making sure people know what we offer. She's an incredible new addition to our team. Mark Root. Mark is our park project coordinator, sorry, park project coordinator, and has been with the city since 1984. Mark has an unmatched ability to coordinate complex capital projects, ensuring they move forward smoothly, on time, and on budget. He's currently managing progress on the Hayward Park Trail right outside, the Green at 38th, and Panorama Tennis Court projects. Mark's depth of knowledge and steady leadership make a lasting difference every day. Alright, Beth June. Beth is our event and volunteer coordinator. She's been with the department for over 20 years, bringing innovative ideas, enthusiasm, collaboration, and fun each and every day. She's currently working hard to bring you this year's performance in the park lineup, and planning a grand opening celebration to remember at the Green at 38th. Brandon Altenberg is our grant and special project administrator, one of the hardest-working people I know. In addition to helping secure several million dollars over the years in grant funding, Brandon is leading our department through an extensive reaccreditation process. He's also working closely with the Mile High Flood District on land acquisition projects, and serving as the liaison to the Wheat Ridge Historical Society. His versatility, focus, and integrity make him an irreplaceable part of our team. Thank you, Brandon. Benny Paez is our extraordinary Parks, Forestry, and Open Space Manager, whose calm leadership and commitment to education, stewardship, and excellence show in every park, trail, and initiative. Under Benny's leadership, we've completed a wide range of park improvements, ensuring our parks, trails, and open spaces remain safe, clean, and inviting. He's known throughout the city for his professionalism, collaboration, and quiet strength. Thanks, Benny. And finally, Susie Anderson, our exceptional Recreation Division Manager, has been serving this community through the Parks and Recreation Department since 1993. Susie is incredibly hardworking, detail-oriented leader with passion for people. She shines when it comes to lifting others up, fostering team morale, and helping staff grow into their full potential. Her dedication is unmatched. Finally, I'm beyond grateful to serve alongside these incredible professionals and all of those who couldn't be here tonight. Thank you for giving me a moment to brag. I'm just incredibly proud of the entire Wheat Ridge Parks and Recreation team and all that they've accomplished this year. Thank you so much for this recognition.
We are now at our public comments, our public's right to speak portion of the meeting, where members of our public may address the city council on any topic not listed on the agenda tonight. If you have signed up to speak tonight, I will call your name as well as the next person on deck. When I call your name, please come to the podium and give us your first and last name. Please spell your last name for the record, and then tell us whether you live or work in Wheat Ridge. You will have three minutes to address the council. In front of the podium, there are three lights. You'll see a green light when there's time going. At 30 seconds, you'll see the yellow light, and at the red light, please wrap up your remarks. Let's see, I have a few people signed up tonight. Let me call up first Gretchen Josten, followed by Michael Josten.
Thank you guys for hearing us again. My name is Gretchen Josten, J-O-S-T-E-N. My husband and I live in Wheat Ridge. We've been here for about, it's 2011. We're here to bring up the car wash at 44th and Gray. This last week was a bit of a breaking point for me. I'm a very calm, level-headed person, and I enjoy being out in my garden. It's what has brought me peace. And we moved away during the construction because it was a lot, and thought moving back, it would just be not as impactful. And it is kind of a nightmare. I can't be outside without having headphones on, and it's not something that I want to continue with. I just ask for your help to please continue to bring change. I'm very appreciative of the shift to 7 to 10, but unfortunately, those are the hours I'm out in my garden. I know you guys are doing your hardest, and we appreciate everyone a lot. I appreciate your updates. I appreciate you guys fighting for us. We just want good neighbors, and I feel like it doesn't feel like a good neighbor right now when we have to have a noise machine on in our house and headphones on outside to just exist. So I just want my peace back, and I thank you for hearing us and fighting for us and just standing strong so that we can have a peaceful neighborhood again.
Thank you. Michael Josten up, and then Jan Facinelli on deck.
Mike Josten, J-O-S-T-E-N, with my wife Gretchen. Also talking about the car wash. You can obviously see it's affecting us quite a bit here. I know there's been improvements trying to be made with the hours reducing, and they've tried to shut the front doors, but it's obviously hasn't been enough. It's the back doors, that's what the noise is still getting out, so. Yeah, it's been tough. It's obviously affecting us quite a bit, affecting our home life, as you can see. And I know everyone's trying to make progress on eliminating this noise, but hopefully we can see that happen soon, so thank you.
Jan Facinelli and Greg Primavera on deck.
Hello again. This is Jan Facinelli, F-A-C-I-N-E-L-L-I. I work in Wheat Ridge. I share the fence with the car wash. And I'm here to speak for myself, saying there's not been much improvement. It's affecting my health at this point with a little bit of heart palpitations from the anxiety and the stress of constantly wondering how I'm going to keep my practice going. I hear the noise through my windows and through the walls still. I'm frustrated, and I know you're all working, but we're supposed to be calling every time, which could be 10 times an hour. And then by the time somebody can come out from the police with the decibel reader, because you only have one, the noise may be down from four bays going at one time to just one. So it seems kind of counterintuitive that we have to keep calling all the time when you all, you know, when the city knows that's happening. And I'm speaking for Mike, who couldn't be here today because he got hit in the head with a piece of metal today and has lacerations and head injuries. So he is going to be sending you, if he hasn't already, he did send it to Officer Kellogg. At 4:00 in the morning, two weeks ago, car wash woke him up, 4:00 in the morning. So they're not listening to the timeframe of 10 to 7:00. And then he took his son to work last week at 5:00 in the morning, and there were cars being washed. And he took a picture of that. I don't think it was a video. But so he's got timestamped proof that they are not following the guidelines that you have set forth. And Patrick talked to us tonight, and so I'm feeling very much more hopeful, thank you, that maybe things are moving faster than we've known because the communication broke down a little bit. Rachel, thank you for your time this morning, and Scott, thank you for supporting us that you're on YouTube watching that. We feel like we've got advocates. And so I'm hoping I can keep my practice, and thank you for what you're doing, and I hope it gets resolved soon. We too want it to be just social, you know, good neighbors. I did check with a company that takes care of sound mitigation for car washes. That's all they do. And they help the homeowners and they help the businessmen. And they said, there is a lot you can do with the motors and the blowers to, you know, mitigate the sound. And I don't know how you can force them to do that, but I hope you can. Thank you.
Thank you. Greg Primavera and Chris Neitzold on deck.
Greg Primavera, P-R-I-M-A-V-E-R-A. Been in Wheat Ridge in my house for 46 years. This is just, I go in my backyard, idiots. I can't take, I can't take it anymore. It's just noise, noise, noise. They have four bays. All four of them are going, a minute and a half each one, blowers, and it just doesn't stop. I can't sit in my front yard anymore, can't hear the birds, and can't have a decent cup of coffee. I'm just asking for some relief. This is the worst it's ever, ever been. And it's just, something needs to be done. I go down to my friend's house at 44th and 45th and J. We still can hear it there. And it's not loud, but you still can hear it. And it's like, what are we doing? Why does this have to be like this? I know the city council is working on this, the lawyers and everything else like that. We don't have the money to fight them. They're fighting us, and we're trying to get something done. And I know you're working on this and everything else like that, but it's just not working. You have your windows open, you can't hear, no, you can hear, but you can hear the car wash, people going into the east side of the, no entrance, and they drive in there. They just don't care. And I'm just hoping something can get done. I appreciate it. Thank you.
Thank you. Chris Neitzold.
Hello, my name is Chris. Last name spelled N is in Neitzold, or N is in Nancy, I-E-T-Z-O-L-D. I'm a local student, live at 4350 Gray Street. I go to flight school at BJC, Rocky Mountain Metro. And I get up, I have flights at 4:30 in the morning, it's going. And at night, it's going when I come home after a 12-hour day, it's going. It's unfortunate, obviously, you can see the impact that it has on the other people that are living there. I'm new to the area. I've been here a year. But if this was in your neighborhood, I guarantee you something would be done sooner, faster. The response from city council, like, I understand that you guys have a special exceptions permit, and having a business back in Virginia that I had to employ a special exceptions permit, I know that those can be withdrawn. So I'm hoping that city council, I'm pleading with city council, that you guys will consider removing the special exceptions permit until that these noise abatements or some other solution is put into place.
Thank you.
Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Mr. Goff, I believe that we have a little bit of an update on this.
We do. Thank you, Mayor Protam. Lauren McAlack, our community development director, and maybe our city attorney as well. We've been working on this the last week to come up with some more proactive solutions. They would like to provide an update this evening.
Thank you. Yes, we talked about this last Monday. As council is aware, the car wash has been cited into municipal court with the court date now scheduled for July 2nd. Following an earlier continuance, at last week's meeting, there was a request for clear enforcement benchmarks and a more defined path to compliance with specific deadlines that are measurable and understandable for both the operator yourselves and the neighbors. In response, as Patrick mentioned, staff met last week with both the city attorney and the city prosecutor to evaluate next steps, and will be proceeding with enforcement through the special use process. After reviewing the case file more thoroughly and the applicable code sections, the first step that needs to happen is a formal notice of noncompliance with specific language regarding the special use permit, that application, and how their operations and maintenance are not aligned with that application and form of approval. That notice is in draft form and prepared to be issued tomorrow with a series of very specific. We've got, we started with a few. I think I'm now up to maybe five or six specific deadlines, both short-term and long-term corrective action. I recognize that there's concerns about the extended timeline and sort of vague deadlines to date, but I think this notice will clarify that. And in short, failure to meet any of those deadlines would result in us sort of immediately scheduling a hearing for revocation. That notice outlined with really specific code language back to the special use permit is required before we can schedule that kind of a hearing. We'll continue to keep council and neighbors informed as we finalize that notice and it goes out the door tomorrow.
And I might add, Lauren is right to emphasize that when a special use permit is issued, one of the standards in the code for issuance of a special use permit or its continued effectiveness is that the operations and maintenance of the facility be such as to not negatively affect adjacent land uses. And I get it, that the special use permit, when initially issued, the configuration of the auto wash was much less. There wasn't as much, there weren't as many automatic bays, et cetera, and there were dryers. And really, that's operation and maintenance, which has now changed, and is really one of the reasons that it's appropriate for the city to issue a notice of noncompliance. And Lauren is right in saying that as the holder of a special use permit, that's an entitlement, that's a permit from the city. And so there is entitlement under the code for notice that you're not in compliance, and how to bring it into compliance. The letter that Lauren has put together that I've reviewed is really specific around that. And she's right to point out that it's kind of a two-stage process. The, there's really three. There's the notice of noncompliance, which will go out with specific dates, and some rather early dates to, for the operation to come into compliance with certain things. And later dates, especially around the noise study, et cetera, which just will take longer. But we don't want for that waiting for the noise study to slow down enforcement. And that's the issue Lauren and I talked about today, and we're able to come to a conclusion that we can design a schedule of dates, some are rather quick, that if any date is not met, then that would allow us to trigger the hearing in front of the city council on revocation. And that would satisfy the code. So it's important for you to know that the notice that will go out not only checks the box in terms of a notice of noncompliance under the code, but then sets up some dates that we can enforce. And if all goes well and everything is satisfied according to each date, then we won't need a revocation hearing. But if not, we are kind of designing this so that we'll be able to know quickly if things aren't going well, so that we can bring it forward to you. That's the report.
Thank you. I think Counselor Ohm had a question.
Yeah, thank you. Is there, is there anything in the short term that we can do to just basically stop, stop the noise? Just tell them, you're banned from using the blowers period. You can still have the car wash, you just can't operate the blowers, you know, period, at any time.
That's actually, and Lauren can add to this, but that's actually one of the early compliance requests that we have made that are, that is in this letter, either turn the blowers off or reduce their sound to an acceptable level within a very short period of time, like within about a week. Because we perceive that to be one of a couple of the real significant reasons that we have this problem. It's the blowers and the wash bay doors being open or shut. And that's the other request that we're going to make for a near-term solution. And if later they can design things, and the sound study can show, they can design things, turn the blowers back on, or otherwise operate them, then fine. But we've identified those two things as being really critical, and being things that can be addressed right away, that don't really require a sound study. Those can be addressed right away while we're taking a longer-term view. So taking too long to say that the answer is yes to your question.
Because I'm just saying along the lines of, you know, if there is a, say, a concert, you know, on 38th, and people complained, it would get shut down. It wouldn't go on for months and months and months. It would be like, you're done, you pull the plug, and then there's the permit issue. I'm just wondering if there's any way we can just tell that company, like, you've had four months to comply, you're done operating the blowers, but we're not shutting down your business.
Well, yes, I think there is, but let's remember that this is a special use permit. Where you have concerts, they're not operating under an SUP. A special use permit is a zoning entitlement. It really is. It's like a special zoning designation, and to unwind it or to change its terms requires the process that the code puts together. But that can be fairly timely. And that's why, as I said, we designed this notice to require some pretty timely action. And we'll see pretty quickly whether there's any inclination on behalf of the owner to do that or not. So we'll know pretty soon. If it works out that they're not willing to do that, then the next step will be to trigger a hearing in front of the council, which we can do fairly promptly as well.
Thank you. Counselor Holtein.
Thank you. I just want to thank everyone for coming out tonight, and I appreciate that you are persistently staying engaged in this. And I appreciate hearing from you directly on what the experience is. It's really heartbreaking to hear. I just know if this, if someone said, if this was my backyard, it would, I mean, it's just really devastating to imagine what summer would be like to not be able to spend time in my garden. A couple of things. One, I just want to clarify the court date. I think I heard you say July 2nd, but I think I've heard the 7th. Can we confirm what that court date is?
I think it, I think it's July 2nd. That's 7/2.
Yeah, I may have inappropriately set the 7th. Lauren would know better than me.
Okay, so it's July 2nd. And then, I mean, I think what we're hearing is that there's the criminal activity of the noise violations, and then there's the zoning compliance with the special use permit. When we're hearing from neighbors that they're operating well outside of the operational hours that have been agreed to, is that compliance with hours that have been agreed to, is there, is that compliance within the special use permit, or is that something that, that the PD can be enforcing?
My first reaction is within the special use permit, because when issued, I don't believe it had a timeframe.
There is no discussion of hours in the application or in the approval.
Okay.
And so as a result of, obviously, the dialogue we've been having with everyone, including the, the car wash, we have requested and they have said they have complied with a reduction in hours. But you're right to put that in the CUP or the special use permit box rather than the criminal case.
Okay. So I appreciate that, I saw Patrick running around making sure he's got contact information for keeping the neighbors engaged. Please inform Counselor Omen, myself, if there's any noncompliance with the, the letter that you're sending out, so that we can be informed, because if, if they fall out of noncompliance, then I know I would be interested in moving swiftly to bring it to a hearing.
Fair enough, and, and on that subject, I, I agree, we will absolutely keep council informed. What you'll probably get will be updates from me under a confidential attorney-client cover note, because I do want to preserve the ability to have a, a clean revocation hearing if it comes to that. But we'll make sure you get information as attorney-client information, which you're allowed to get and should get from me.
Okay, great, thank you. I appreciate everyone's time tonight.
All right, thank you. Counselor Larson.
Thank you, Mayor Protem, and just a few questions here. Has a noise study been commissioned? And if it has, what is involved and who's paying for it?
We have asked the operator to commission a noise study at their expense, and we have not seen any data to date. They have conveyed what that process would look like, which would be the collection of data, the modeling of that data, and then the recommendation of certain mitigation strategies. Part of our letter, the first deadline, I believe actually, is to provide evidence that they have formally engaged a sound consultant. And then we've created a few milestones to see both a progress report and a, and a draft report that would be sort of a longer timeline beyond the short-term mitigation measures we'd be requesting for next week.
And I'm sorry, we've requested a draft next week?
No, but the, but we'd be, where our letter is establishing deadlines that would include both a review that it has been, the sound consultant has been engaged, and then later a request for the draft report, and then a request for the final report. So trying to scaffold some milestones to ensure that there is forward progress.
And data resulting from the study will be due when?
That's what we're working on to finalize.
Okay, so I would hope that in the reporting process that Attorney Dahl provides would include data from the study.
Yes.
Sure, as, as it's available, we'll provide that to you. We'll also provide sort of the final version of the, the notice of noncompliance letter that we intend to send tomorrow. I think that'll probably help you understand the, the, as Lauren points out, the milestones. And that's really, I think, the right way to think about this, is milestones that are really rather swift, some of them next week, and then following on. But the failure to meet a milestone means triggering, pardon, triggering the hearing in front of the council. And so while we would hope that we get all the way along and the milestones are met and we actually then see a sound study conducted, results from the sound study, permanent design, changes at the facility that are reliant upon a sound study, kind of the, the grown-up, kind of educated way to, to do it. But if, if the early milestones to address, you know, the dryers and, and the doors quickly aren't, aren't met for whatever reason, then we would be here.
Great, thank you. Counselor Weaver.
I just want to clarify, so if they don't meet the first milestone on there, or any of them, that will trigger, just one, they don't have to not meet them all.
That's correct.
Cool, thanks.
Any other questions? Thank you, we will help you as soon as we can. We will move on to agenda item number one. Counselor Holte, would you like to introduce this item?
I, I would. I'd like to introduce Council Bill Number 112025, An Ordnance Amending Chapter 26 of the Wheat Ridge Code of Laws Concerning Multi-Use Residential Parking Requirements and Making Conforming Amendments Therewith. Is there a presentation, or should I read the adissue?
There'll be a presentation.
Okay, all right.
Thank you, Counselor Holte. This is an ordinance on second reading. It is a public hearing, it's not quasi-judicial. Going to open the public hearing. Mr. Goff, we, looking for that presentation?
Yes, Scott Keller, senior planner, is here this evening, thanks.
Thank you, counsel. Speaking to you about Council Bill 112025, which is updating our parking requirements to comply both with some state legislation and council direction that was provided at the March 17th study session. So at that study session, staff discussed with council the reasoning behind some of the parking code changes, and also discussed potential impacts to Wheat Ridge. I won't go into that great of detail that we did in the study session, but I'll kind of hit the highlights of the ordinance. And the ordinance really takes a more market-based approach to parking for multi-unit residential, incorporates the state legislation best, state legislation best practices, and also includes some conforming amendments to help provide clarity within the existing parking requirements. So just a little background, again, the state of Colorado legislature passed several bills in 2024 related to land use and housing. This was one of them, House Bill 241304, which was called Minimum Parking Requirements, and that prohibits municipalities from enacting and enforcing minimum off-street parking requirements for multi-unit residential developments within certain areas called transit service areas. And this prohibition would apply to all new multi-unit residential development and to reuse of existing buildings, converting them into multi-unit residential. Does not prevent developers from providing parking, it just prevents municipalities from requiring minimum quantity of parking for apartments or condominiums. Also does not change anything related to ADA accessible parking requirements, bicycle parking, loading, or affordable housing requirements. And this bill does take effect in about a week, June 30th. And we discussed this, but, but basically, staff did not have too many concerns about removing parking requirements for multi-unit residential. It might be perceived as a big change, but parking is really market-driven, and especially in suburban environments, developers will naturally provide more parking per unit than in urban developments, as it's likely that more residents will need to own cars and need to drive. And providing parking also reduces risk for developers and that they can still obtain loans to build their projects. But it is really market-driven. The one aspect of this bill that we discussed at the study session was related to the definition of what multi-unit residential actually is. And for the purposes of this, we actually need to clarify our code a bit to separate multi-unit into apartments and condos, and then townhomes as another category. Townhouses are actually referred to as single-unit attached in our code, and the building code also treats townhouses as single-unit homes. So in some places, they're lumped into this multi-unit category, and in other places, they're lumped into single unit. And because the bill, the House bill does not dictate how to define multi-unit for purposes of parking, we've actually included townhomes into the single-unit category to retain parking requirements for townhouses specifically. So give a quick summary of the proposed code amendment. The ordinance makes the following changes. It will update our parking requirements throughout the code to remove those minimum parking requirements for multi-unit residential uses, but retaining parking requirements for single-attached or townhome uses. It will update definitions related to multi-unit dwellings and single-attached dwellings to better distinguish one from the other. And will also update all of our development standard charts and used, permitted use charts to include terms for both those types of dwellings as applicable. And then lastly, there are a few conforming amendments that will help clarify both the code requirements and terms throughout the code. There are two motions tonight. We're recommending approval of the ordinance. The first motion is the approval, and then the second motion, we did add in, in case council is inclined to take a similar approach to how they approved the ADU ordinance the other month. And that is related to if state law changes, asking for a study session to come back and discuss parking requirements. So the second motion in the report is essentially the same motion that was made for ADUs, but replaced with the parking. So that will be at council's discretion, whether to entertain that second motion. Thanks.
Thank you. Any other presentations on that?
That is it, thank you.
Okay. Before we go to questions from council, I will go to questions from the public. I have nobody signed up to speak, and I have nobody in chambers here. City clerk, do we have anybody signed up online? Nope. All right, then I will go to questions from council. Do we have any questions? Counselor Larson.
Thank you, Mayor Protem, and so I understand we're making these amendments based on the state legislation, the state of Colorado, it said. Define it, define what you see the state, the legislation saying that we have to conform with.
The state legislation says that cities are no longer allowed to require parking for multi-unit residential or reuse into multi-unit residential, and that's, that's the extent of the state legislation.
And we define multi-unit residential as an apartment building with multiple residences, a condominium development with multiple residences. But, single unit, single unit attached, right? That's a townhome, right?
Yes.
And the, I, I guess where I've gotten a little bit off is that in, give me a second here, when we get into the charts for single unit attached, that would include a, an apartment building, like, that I, that I have in my district, where you've got four residences within a single building. It's not a duplex, right? A four-unit, a fourplex, I guess. And then, when I look at the minimum lot size as required by code, it says it's 12,500 square feet per, that, that's the minimum lot for one of these developments, one of these apartment buildings. Although, when I look up the properties in District 4 that would fit under that, they're, they don't seem to be conforming. In other words, they have four units in a lot size that's smaller than the minimum. The only reason this came up is because when I started researching, you know, how, how it would apply to somebody that wanted to build one of these quads, one of these fourplexes in, in, in the district, they would require, the, the minimum lot size would be 12,500 square feet. And so my conclusion is that the existing lots are not conforming, the existing buildings. If, if, we can talk about this later, but it's just, it's, it's a little bit of, for me, it's a little, it's a tough one to, to get over. If we've got existing buildings that are non-conforming, if somebody wants to build one of these, then they could just say, well, what about these?
So there are existing conditions in the community that may not comply with the lot size minimums, but that's not related to the parking ordinance that's under discussion tonight.
And I understand that, and, and so I probably need to have a discussion offline then, because I, I understand why we're doing this, it's just when we change the definition of multi-unit buildings versus single unit attached, we have, there's a gray area here in, in what a single unit attached might look like.
I think the, so the reason, if I may, the distinction isn't to change how any existing structures classified. The distinction between multi-unit and single unit attached is both a zoning code terminology, but also building code terminology. So when units are attached to each other and they're intended for fee simple ownership, like a townhome, it has to meet a different standard. So most fourplexes that you're describing are not single unit attached. They were not built with fire separation between the walls, independent utilities, and, and other features that are required of townhome development. So you are right that there are existing multi-unit developments that are likely legally non-conforming in terms of their lot sizes. The, the intent of our modification of the terminology is to clarify that when you see multi-unit development on a lot, it may be apartment style or condo style, and it may be townhome, a fee simple. And we made that distinction in this code specifically to allow us to apply parking standards in as many scenarios as we can. The one scenario that the state has said we cannot is when it's multi-unit for the purpose of apartments. So our goal here was to retain control, local control over parking where we can, where the state allows us to, but that required that we distinguish between these different building types.
Okay, I get it, sort of, thanks.
Thank you, Counselor Omen.
Thank you, Mayor Protem. So the first question I have is the, the duplex, can I assume that it applies to both attached and detached duplex dwellings?
Yes, so parking requirements are retained for a single unit and for duplex as well.
But attached and detached?
Correct.
Okay. And then procedurally, Mr. Dahl, on the motions, it looks like there's three motions? There's like a first motion, then there's an or, but then there's, there's like two motions, and it seems like the last motion could actually be, I guess, could be attached to, to either one.
Yes, although honestly, if the council moves to postpone indefinitely.
Right.
The third motion is irrelevant.
Okay.
If the council chooses to take the first motion and approve the ordinance, then you can either stop there, or if you want to have an auto, or bring it back to study session based upon state legislative action, and take as the second motion, the one that's third in the list.
Thank you.
Yep.
Any other questions? Seeing none, you do, Counselor Hoppy? Okay. No other questions, seeing none. I will close the public hearing and ask Counselor Holte for a motion.
Thank you. I move to approve Council Bill Number 112025, An Ordnance Amending Chapter 26 of the Wheat Ridge Code of Laws Concerning Multi-Unit Residential Parking Requirements and Making Conforming Amendments Therewith. On second reading, order it published and that it takes effect immediately after final publication.
Second?
I have a motion and a second by Counselor Hoppy. Do I have discussion on the motion? No discussion, seeing no discussion? Oh, Counselor Holte.
Yeah, I just, I'm excited to see this come forward, and as we heard in the staff presentation, you know, parking in these circumstances really are market-driven, and we, we have a lot of unused parking in the city, and so I think allowing developers to really recognize like what, what the parking demand is that works best for what they're building. We heard you can't get loans if you're not providing adequate parking. Buildings last a really long time, and so, you know, I think this is an opportunity for builders to really focus on making sure we're leveraging our land use for, for housing, and hopefully bringing more attainable housing opportunities in the city. So I will definitely be supporting this.
Thank you. Any further discussion on the motion? Seeing none, will the court please pull the council?
All i's, no n's, motion carries.
And I guess this is mine, I do not intend to make the second motion.
All right. Moving on to item number two. Counselor Omen, will you please introduce this item?
Thank you, Mayor Protem. Council Bill 12-2025, An Ordnance Amending Section 26-502 of the Wheat Ridge Code of Laws Concerning Procedural Updates to Landscaping Requirements. At issue, this ordinance amends Section 26502 of the Wheat Ridge Code of Laws to update landscaping requirements to correct minor discrepancies in the city's regulations and to codify a policy related to calculating maximum allowable limits of irrigated turf and nonliving materials.
Thank you. This is an ordinance on second reading. It is a public hearing, it's not quasi-judicial. I'm going to open the public hearing. Mr. Goff, do we have a presentation?
No presentation this evening, Mayor Protem, but we are here for any questions you may have.
Thank you. Before I go to questions from council... Before I go to questions from council, I'm looking for questions from the public. I have nobody signed up in chambers. Do we have anybody signed up online? No. Okay, thank you. Seeing none, I will go to questions from council. All right, seeing no questions from council, Mr., or Counsel Oom, can I have a motion, please? Oh, I'm sorry. Ah ha, sorry. Rookie mistake, sorry, thank you. I'm going to close the public hearing, and Counsel Oom, may I have a motion?
Thank you, Mayor Protem. I move to approve Council Bill Number 12-2025, an ordinance amending Section 26502 of the Wheat Ridge Code of Laws concerning procedural updates to landscaping requirements on second reading, order it published, and that it takes effect immediately after final publication.
Second?
I have a motion and a second by Counselor Holtein. Do we have any discussion on the motion? Seeing no discussion, will the clerk please pull the counsel?
All eyes, no nays, motion carries.
Thank you. We will move on to item number three. Counselor Hoppy, will you please introduce this item?
Thank you, Mayor Protem. State's Resolution Number 34-2025, a resolution amending the fiscal year 2025 renewal Wheat Ridge Bond Fund budget to reflect the approval of a supplemental budget appropriation in the amount of $4,108,500 for the purpose of issuing a contract for construction with the Youngfield Street Beautification Project to Colorado Designscapes. At issue, Davis Evans and Associates was awarded a contract to prepare plans and specifications for the Youngfield Street Beautification Project. Plans were completed in March 2025, and the project was advertised for bids. Five bids were received in response to the city's invitation for bids to construct the Youngfield Street Beautification Project. The lowest responsive bidder was Colorado Designscapes, Inc. It is recommended that the city enter into a contract with Colorado Designscapes, Inc. to complete the project.
Thank you, Counselor Hoppy. This is a resolution of council. Mr. Goff, do we have a presentation?
We do, thank you. New face this evening. He was here last week, actually, didn't have a chance to introduce him, but Kent Kisselman is our interim Public Works Director. Just like to introduce you to Kent. He's been with the city now for, how long you been here, Kent?
Nearly a year.
Nearly a year. He has extensive experience in public works in several different municipalities, and we're happy to have him aboard. He's here this evening to give you a quick update on this great project, the Youngfield Street Beautification. Kent?
Thank you. Thank you, Mayor Protem and council. Thank you for having me this evening. The introduction was well-received, and we have a cup picture up there on the board. The corridor is a major entryway to the city, and this project is going to focus on the west side of Youngfield, and is going to include irrigation, landscaping, public art, and city branding. The extents of the project are along Youngfield from 40th Avenue to 31st Avenue. Could we go to the second slide, please? The city received five bids, and the lowest responsive bidder was Colorado Designscapes. The project duration for this project will be 180 days, but we are yet to receive the permit from the Federal Highway Administration. We've been contacting them every other week for the last five months, and we're waiting on the permit. We're going to issue the notice to proceed because of the long lead time on some of the art con components, so we can get going, and we'll still be pushing to get that permit. On the second PDF, you can see the monuments that'll be along the off-ramps, some of the monument signage, and then the fencing with the different art components mixed in along the fence line, which is in various places. With that, staff recommends awarding a contract to Colorado Designscapes, Inc. in the amount of $3,375,500 for the construction of Youngfield Street Beautification Project with the contingency amount of $373,500, for a total not to exceed amount of $4,108,500. Thank you, and I'll answer any questions you may have.
And just add on to that real quickly, just to clarify that this is being funded from the Urban Rental Authority Bond Fund. So we were very excited to have those funds available. This, again, as Kent mentioned, this is a very visible corridor in our community with the developments, ongoing development at Clear Creek Crossing and the Apple Shopping Center, which is our major tech generator in the city. We wanted to clean up this corridor. It's primarily all CDOT right-of-way. They weren't managing or maintaining it very well, so we're going to do it for them. So excited to have the funding to be able to do this, and as Kent said, we're here to answer any questions.
Thank you, Mr. Goff. Before we go to questions from council, I will go to questions from the public. I have nobody signed up to speak. City Clerk, do we have anybody signed up online? Okay. I will go to questions from council. Counsel Weaver.
I just, I'm trying to find it in here. I am remembering the conversation we had here in council about it. Is there sidewalk continuity in this project? I remember us talking about the electrical boxes and everything else, but will you be able to walk on a sidewalk between those streets?
This project does not include sidewalk, but we are working on sidewalk continuity on the east side of Youngfield. Right now, there is sidewalk between 38th and, or 32nd and 38th. We do have a project lined up to hopefully do it from 38th all the way to almost 44th, again, on the east side, which will connect to the trail.
This is on the highway side?
Yeah, the design, these sign improvements are on the west side, the sidewalk is on the east side.
Yes, thank you. I will just comment that I have seen, there is some electrical box over there with the art design, and it looks really nice. So, I just, that was a clarifying question. This does not include sidewalks, all good, thank you.
Thank you. Counsel Holtein.
Thank you. So am I understanding correctly that the holdup is waiting for our regional FHWA office to approve this? Is that?
That is correct.
Okay. So they have lost half of their staff. And so, if it continues to delay, how engaged are we with CDOT and our CDOT representation?
I email CDOT every other week, and I actually emailed him again this morning, and he said the response was, the FHWA is aware of our request.
Okay.
I was going to try tomorrow to call the FHWA myself and see if I could get anywhere with that, but again, it's been, we've been pushing for the last four months to get this permit going, and just no movement.
Yeah, yeah, just, I know through my day job that they have lost a lot of their staff, and then they've created some fairly chaotic backend permit approval processes. So hopefully, hopefully we can get FHWA to be more responsive. So I appreciate all the effort that you guys are putting in for that, because we want to see this moving forward, so I appreciate it, thank you.
The good news, approval of this tonight, as Kent mentioned, will allow us to start getting this stuff ordered, fabricated, and we'll continue pushing on even harder and make sure that it's done when we're, the products are in. And if you can help in any way, we'd appreciate it. Your day job.
Thank you. Counsel Larson.
Thank you, Mayor Protem, and I appreciate the inclusion of a diagram. I'm still having a little trouble understanding what this is going to look like when it is put up. I understand the monument signs and their locations makes a lot of sense, but the panels, are we talking about like a sound wall that you'd see on the interstate, or are these standing off the roadway, right off the street, or, I'm talking about the panels, right?
Yeah, there'll be, there'll be different places, or spots, that there'll be an erected fence, and then different, those art components will be, you know, placed, and then there'll be a section of fence, and then there'll be another panel of the art. And so that's what the fence components look like. And then kind of at both ends of the project will be those monuments tied in with the electrical box that was already covered, and then throughout the project in various areas is going to be, you know, landscaping, irrigation, flowers, bushes, some trees. So that's what the project generally entails.
And the panels and fencing, how close to the roadway is that?
I'd have to get back to you and give you the answer on that, and look at the plans in more detail.
And if we're planting trees along a roadway, we've got to take into account that sometimes cars go off roadways and they hit trees.
Yes, I think most of the trees are off of the, they're, one of the grouping of trees, I believe, is at one of the interchanges, and I think the other grouping of trees is at the other interchange as well. So yes, we'll note that.
The idea is not to add a hazard to the road, next to the road?
No, of course not. And these plans, CDOT's been involved from the beginning of this and had to approve all this, so it's in there right-of-way. So they've signed up on it, so, yep.
It's just, every time I go by there, I kind of look at the space, the distance between the edge of the roadway and where the highway is. And so they're, you know, the right-of-way, their right-of-way gets bigger and gets smaller, depending where you are.
Yeah, and it takes into, it takes into account the width.
Will there be at some point a, an actual rendering of what this is going to look like?
We have one, and we've had, we've shared it in a previous study session. We didn't, we didn't bring it this evening for that, but we can, we'll get you a copy if you'd like to see it. It has changed a little bit over, through the design process, it might be a little different than what you saw several months ago, but we'll share that again.
Okay, I just, this is a fairly substantial amount of money, and I just want to make sure we're going down the right path.
Thank you. Counsel Oom.
Thank you, Mayor Protem. Can you confirm if the contractor needs to obtain a CDOT right-of-way permit before construction?
That's what we're waiting on. We have the CDOT permit, but we're waiting for the FHWA to give their permit. And once we get the permit, we can begin construction.
Any other questions from council? Seeing none, Counsel Hoppy, can we have a motion?
I move to approve Resolution Number 34-2025, a resolution amending the fiscal year 2025 renewal Wheat Ridge Fund budget to reflect the approval of a supplemental budget appropriation in the amount of $4,108,4,185,000 for the purpose of issuing a contract to Colorado Designscapes, Inc. in the amount of $3,735,000 with a contingency amount of $373,500 for a total not to exceed amount $4,108,500 to complete the Youngfield Street Beautification Project.
I have a motion and a second by Counsel Oom. Do we have any discussion on the motion? Seeing none, will the clerk please pull the counsel?
All eyes, no nays, motion carries.
Excellent. Moving on, we will go to agenda item number four. Counsel Larson, will you please introduce this?
Thank you, Mayor Protem. This is a motion to accept the transfer of property located at 4150 Kipling Street from the Mile High Flood District. At issue, the Mile High Flood District and city staff recently worked with the owners of 4150 Kipling Street to acquire the property. The parcel is located entirely within the Clear Creek Flood Plain at the convergence with the Lena Gulch Flood Plain. Acquiring this property will allow the city to reduce flood risk and protect the floodway's functionality through future projects. The city and MHFD have no immediate plans for this property, but having ownership on both sides of Kipling Street is critical for implementing any improvements to the floodplain.
Thank you. This is a motion by the council. Mr. Goff, do we have a staff presentation?
Yeah, Lauren McLaughlin will add just a little bit more to the issue statement.
Thank you. You saw similar motion earlier this year, I think, for property on the other side of Kipling. This is really an example of seizing an opportunity. You saw in the exhibit that this property is entirely encumbered by the 100-year floodplain and the floodway. Property owner approached the city recognizing that encumbrance and the difficulty that would come with selling that on the private market. Recognizing the importance of this parcel and sort of our overall flood risk strategy, Mile High Flood District was actually able to come to the table with all of the funds for acquisition and funding to demolish the structures that shouldn't be in the floodplain. In the short term, the action tonight is to accept the land from Mile High, and after that, the city would maintain this as open space. In the longer term, we'll explore other potential uses and work with Mile High Flood District on improvements that will mitigate flood risk. You know, from the maps of the green belts, it's rare to have private property this close to the creek, so it really feels like a linchpin piece to help our flood risk. You saw from the author list, probably, it's been a partnership of our engineering team, our parks team, Mile High. I'm here to answer questions to the best of my ability. Thanks.
Thank you. Before we go to questions from council, I am going to go to questions from the public. I have nobody signed up to speak tonight. Do we have anybody signed up online? No. Okay. Questions from council? Counsel Larson.
Thank you, Mayor Protem, and we have initial reports saying that the property that is relatively free of contamination?
Yes, I believe Mile High did due diligence process before acquisition. There's some mitigation that will need to take place, but not significant concerns.
And can you describe, can you describe what is on that property right now? A quick check shows that this, the property goes from Lena Gulch all the way over to Independent Street, right?
Correct, it's a large.
There are some structures on the property right now.
Yes, historically, the primary use has been a single-unit home with a substantial number of outbuildings and other outdoor storage.
What will happen to them?
The majority of those will be demolished.
The majority?
Yes.
Some of them?
A lot of things will be sort of taken off the property. From the aerial view, it's hard to tell what structure versus what's stuff. So there's both an export of things coming off the property and demolition. My understanding is that I think Mile High intends to demolish everything within the floodplain, so that it doesn't present a risk or a nuisance.
When would that sort of surface work start taking place?
I don't know the answer to that.
And given that Mile High has already done a soil sampling and testing and whatnot, does that preclude the city of Wheat Ridge from doing its own study?
No, we, it does not preclude us from doing our own. We have access to the site assessment work that they did in April, so unless we found something new, I don't know that we'd need to, but we certainly could if we needed to in the future.
Great, thank you. Any further questions? Seeing none, Counsel Larson may have a motion.
Thank you, Mayor. I move to accept the transfer of property located at 4150 Kipling Street from the Mile High Flood District and authorize and direct the mayor, city clerk, and city manager to execute such instruments as necessary for said transfer, in form approved by the city attorney.
Thank you. I have a motion and a second by Counsel Oom. Do we have any discussion on the motion? Seeing none, will the clerk please pull the counsel?
All eyes, no nays, motion carries.
Excellent. Moving on to item number five. Counsel Weaver, will you please introduce this item?
I'd be happy to, Mayor Protem, thank you. This is a motion to approve appointments to boards, commissions, and committees. On April 7th, the resignation of one Sustainable Wheat Ridge member and one IDEA committee member were received, leaving two open vacancies on the City of Wheat Ridge Boards, Commissions, and Committees.
Thank you, Counsel Weaver. Mr. Goff, do we have a presentation on this?
We don't. They, there's a couple different motions. There is an mayor oral appointments, council, or not appointment, but recommendation, council does ratify that, then the second motion for an appointment to District 3 Sustainable Wheat Ridge. So looking for two different motions.
Thank you. Before we go to questions from council, I'm going to go to questions for the public on this, and I see you have nobody signed up. Clerk, do we have anybody signed up online? No. Then I will go to questions from council. Counsel Larson, did you have a question?
I did not have a question.
Okay. No questions from council? All right, then seeing no questions, I am going to start us off. On behalf of the mayor, I recommend the appointment of Haley Meredith at the, to the at-large position on the IDEA Committee, term to expire March 2nd, 2028.
Second?
I'm sorry, a point of order. So this is a recommendation, and then it needs to be ratified, so I believe that the senior member of council, District Council Four, would be making that. She's not here, therefore, Councilmember Larson will be making that ratification recommendation.
And I agree, it needs to be in the form of a motion. And I agree, it needs to be in the form of a motion, move to approve the appointment.
I move to ratify the recommendation by Mayor Bud Starker to appoint Haley Meredith to the at-large position on the IDEA Committee, term to expire March 2nd, 2028.
Second.
I have a motion and a second by Councilor Snell. Do we have any discussion on the motion? Seeing none, will the clerk please pull the council?
All ayes, no nays, motion carries.
Excellent. And I will recognize Councilor Weaver for our next motion.
Thank you. I move to appoint Sachi Adair to District 3 position on the Sustainable Wheat Ridge Committee, term to expire March 2nd, 2027.
Second.
Thank you. I have a motion and a second by Councilor Hoppe. Do we have any discussion on the motion? Seeing none, will the clerk please pull the council?
All ayes, no nays, motion carries.
I believe that is all we have under agenda item number five. So moving on, we will go to city managers' matters.
Thank you, Mayor Protem. Nothing this evening, just condolences to the Starker family.
Thank you. City attorneys' matters.
Nothing tonight, thanks.
Excellent. We will go to elected officials' matters, and I will start with Councilor Snell.
Thank you, Mayor Protem. I just wanted to take a few moments and recognize the residents that are near the car wash and just appreciate them so much coming and sharing their daily experience with the car wash, and I'm really happy that we are continuing to get that resolved, but I really do appreciate their time and very, very sympathetic to their, their plight. That's, that's rough. Also, another, another recognition, very happy to see our Parks and Rec team here this evening, and one person that we didn't really get to recognize because she was recognizing everyone else is our fearless leader, Karen O'Donnell is, is incredible, and we are so lucky to have her, and I am just in awe of all the things that she's done in her short time here, so kudos to her and just amazing work that she's done with our Parks and Rec department. Now, on to some really exciting news. This past weekend, we had our first ever Pride celebration in Wheat Ridge, and I have so many people to thank, but overall, just a huge success. Saturday, headquarters were at Clancy's. It was about 1,000 degrees, but we still managed to get some folks inside cooling off and having a great time with DJs and later bands. So a big thanks to Jeff and Liz and the team over there at Clancy's for being our headquarters, and then lots of businesses, businesses throughout the city had specials, you know, discounts or special for Pride, and just really want to say thank you, because that was a choice, a conscious choice of every one of those businesses to make and be involved in that event, and it means a lot. It means a lot to the residents that, that see that, whether it was just that they posted our flyers, or whether they actually, you know, went in and enjoyed something, but thank you so much to those businesses. And then moving on to Sunday was our picnic, our Pride picnic at Panorama Park, and it was a huge success. I think it was a more, a bigger success than I even imagined, and so many wonderful conversations with residents. We had folks that visited from other cities. We had folks from Westminster, Edgewater, Golden, Arvada, but we had residents come from Wheat Ridge that were so grateful and expressed so much thankfulness and joy in the fact that this is happening in their city. They, I talked to several folks that have lived here 20-plus years, and just to be able to say that they had a Pride celebration in their own community, they're very, very happy about that. And so I, I felt very, very happy to have that. I felt like it was definitely needed, and I feel like we are just at a great place to start planning for next year. But I do want to say a huge thank you to Wheat Ridge Police Department both days. They were super accessible, they were very aware of the support that they were lending, and came and visited us on Sunday at the picnic. It was great to have them. And then we had a small but mighty team of volunteers that put this entire thing together, and it, it happened in like, what felt like two hours. It might happen in about three and a half weeks. And I'm just so grateful to our volunteers for all the hard work that they put in, putting up decorations, handing out flyers, making sure people had stickers and coloring sheets for the kiddos. And then most of all, just thank you so much to the community for coming out and for expressing things. You know, we had lots of great food, people brought dishes to share, kiddos got to play games, but really, the, the most impactful thing is, A, that it happened at all, and B, that people got to connect with each other, and, you know, whether it was folks that had, you know, known each other, or folks that just got acquainted at the picnic, I think that's huge because it was a community-building event, and that's what's so important. So I'm just appreciative to everyone involved and really looking forward to planning next year, and it will be, it will be planned a lot sooner and be a lot more complete, but I do encourage all of our city leadership and staff to join us next year and be involved, because it's, it was really impactful and there's a really, a lot of joy around it. So that's all I've got, thank you so much.
Thank you, Councilor Snell. Councilor Holtein.
Thank you. I'm just, I'm proud of Pride, that sounds really fantastic, great work, everyone. Just a couple quick things, some committee updates. So the Legislative Committee met last week before we go on a three-month hiatus. We are working with our Communications Department to get an article out in the next connections that shares more about the work that we have been taking on, so our community understands that we're working to represent them under the dome. We also considered some staff-initiated legislation, which, we're doing some due diligence to see if it's a bill that the city would be interested in introducing. And in, in that three-month hiatus, we are actually going to be meeting with our boards and, like, select boards and commissions to get their input on our legislative agenda as we develop it for the 2026 legislative session. So I'm really proud of the hard work that the mayor and Councilor Larson and I did, putting that together during session, and looking forward already to the next legislative session. It'll come quickly. I also serve on the Sustainable Wheat Ridge Committee, and they met last week. They, the, the way the committee operates is they break into some working groups to take on projects in, in the community, and their projects range everything from green businesses to green events, native plants and tree planting, and much like the, the Pride events, it's, it's a pretty scrappy group of people, and they put in a lot of time to both volunteer at events, but try and figure out how to make sure the way our community interacts with the city is more sustainable and reflective of our values. So just want to recognize the good work coming out of that committee, and I think that's all I have. This is my last meeting for a month. I will be attending, I will, I'm going to Harvard for a small government program for most of the month of July, so I will miss being here, but when I come back, I'll be all brainiac and smart and stuff, so be ready.
We're gonna miss you. Councilor Larson.
Thank you, Mayor Protem, and first off, I'd like to recognize the, the quick action of one of our city staff to, to respond to a potential emergency. Steve Bart is the director of our Economic Development Group, and he and I were having a coffee at the Starbucks at 50th and Kipling when a person walked in the door and said there's a car on fire in the parking lot. And so we, you know, immediately, everybody in the place went out to look. Steve said, where is your fire extinguisher? And, and instead of like, you know, just standing there, maybe getting out a camera and taking a picture, Steve grabbed the fire extinguisher, went up to the fire, it was an old Volkswagen microbus, and there was fire kind of coming out the bottom in the back of it, and he hit the fire extinguisher and it put the fire out, and within five minutes, Wheat Ridge's finest police department was on hand, and the fire department showed up shortly after that, and thanks to Steve's quick action, a possible, possible damaging and hazardous incident was extinguished. I'd also like to remind folks that this Saturday, June 28th, is Ridge Fest at Anderson Park. Show up and prepared to buy plenty of tokens, because all the money benefits local works and other good causes. And then finally, if you've driven by the corner of 44th and Ward Road lately, you've noticed that there's a new business there. There was a trailer service and repair and sales business at that corner, they moved out, relocated, and as of about two weeks ago, there's a company called Flex Drive that's moved in there with a whole fleet of cars. Flex Drive is a fleet management and vehicle subscription service subsidiary of Lyft, and it provides support for Lyft's Express Drive program. It provides access to fleet vehicles for Lyft drivers, maintenance, insurance, and often with flexible rental and lease options. Flex Drive claims to offer a white-glove approach to car access and, and solves a lot of the complexities of car ownership and management for Lyft drivers. So I just wanted to recognize that new business, and we like to welcome them to Wheat Ridge.
Thank you. Councilor Ohm.
Thank you, Mayor Protem. I just want to thank my constituents that came out and spoke about the, the issue and the car wash, and, and, you know, we have a really good community, and thank you to staff for trying to push this forward and the police department. A lot of those constituents, they've told me several times that they really thought very highly of DC Kellogg, and I pass that on to Chief Murtha. And, you know, we need the sales tax, but we, but we also really need good business partners that are, you know, meshing with our, with our community, and so thank you for, staff for looking at this, and, and hopefully we can move it forward, because this has, it's been really, really tough on the neighbors. Thank you, thank you.
Councilor Weaver.
Thank you. Before you head to Ridge Fest, come on over to the west side of Project Prospect Valley Elementary. We will be having a goat parade. The goats are starting their summer jobs with the city, and we will be walking them down 32nd with police escort, starting at 9:00, and we'll get there around 10:00. So everyone's invited to come. Thanks.
It's always great when your kids get a job. See what I, that was fun.
Nothing tonight, thank you.
Thank you. Couple of things before we get out of here tonight. I had the opportunity to join the Business Association at their business after-hours last week at Cypher Automotive, just as a Wheat Ridge automotive family myself. It was really cool to get to go to Cypher and, and take, take a look at all their, our cool stuff. Their specialty automotive shop is amazing. On Friday last week, I joined the, the mayor for a couple of ribbon cuttings. One was at Be a Tree Cremation, which is really cool, right off of 38th and Pierce, and then Lucky Deals Thrift Store, right off, again, 38th and Pierce, right over there. They've got some great deals on some really great clothes. This Thursday, I will be cutting the ribbon at Alchemy of Spirit, which is at 6690 West 38th Avenue, that'll be at 3:30, and anybody's invited to that. That's Jennifer Oderka, who comes to a lot of our Business Association things. She's been a great community member for a long time, so we're excited to get out and, and support her. And also, I want to comment, I was thinking about this today, we are going at, at my business, Personal Achievement Martial Arts, we're going on our 16th year, and 16 years ago, when I opened, they didn't do ribbon cuttings in Wheat Ridge, it just wasn't really a thing that was happening at the time, so I had to have my dad, who was on council at the time, come and like, do a, do a quick one for us, so. But it's so great seeing how much that our business community gets out and supports each other now and really takes care of each other. I'm looking forward to the goat parade on Saturday morning, so if you live around that area and you guys are excited for the goats to come back, 9:00 AM, is that right, Councilor Weaver? It starts at 9:00 AM, going for Prospect Valley, and then Ridge Fest for all the families and for all the businesses. Get out and support Ridge Fest and any businesses in the city of Wheat Ridge. Before we get out of here, and next week is a fifth Monday, so we don't have a meeting, I want to take a moment from all the city staff and all of the city elected officials to wish Mayor Starker and his family, Mary, our sincerest condolences on a loss, and their family, a big loss, and we hope that he'll be okay and, and back in a couple weeks with us. So with no other business to come before the council, I will stand us in a German.